All right, very good. Good morning. The time is now 9:33 a.m. and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of June 8, 2021 is called to order. Due to the COVID-19 national emergency and in accordance with Public Act 254 of 2020, and Ingham County Board of Commissioners Resolution 21-261, State Board of Education Regular and Committee of the whole meeting is being convened with remote access technology. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and order of priority. To accommodate the schedule of Dr. Janay Caldune, the state's chief medical executive, Item D, Presentation by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, will occur at 9:45 a.m. There will be a 10-minute presentation followed by 10 minutes for questions and answers. Are there any items that board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? President Albrecht.
Thank you. We have two proposed resolutions that are both pandemic-related, and so I will make a motion to add to the agenda Discussion and Action on the Resolution on Read by Grade 3 Exemptions and the Resolution on Ramifications of the A- through F system for the 2020-2021 school year. I propose these additions following the item on educational updates related to COVID-19. I further propose that we add to the agenda Discussion and Action on a recommendation to have the Michigan Department of Education prepare a Freedom of Information Act request on charter school financial discovery. And I propose this addition during the state and federal legislative update.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the agenda as initially presented from President Albrecht. Two resolutions immediately following the COVID-19 update and one during the state and federal update. Do I have a second for President Albrecht's motion?
Support.
So I have a second from Dr. Pugh. Is there any discussion associated with the recommended changes to the agenda? Hearing done. Marilyn, if we could do a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strahan? Mr. Strahan, I saw your lips moving, but are you muted? Okay, thank you. Tilly?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, very good. And then if we could have a motion to move the agenda as amended, please?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on the agenda as amended? Hearing done. If we could do a roll call vote, please?
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strahan?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. The Discussion and Action on the Resolution on Read by Grade 3 Exemptions, the Resolution on Ramifications of the A- through F system for the 2020-2021 school year were added to the agenda. These two resolutions will follow educational updates related to COVID-19. In accordance with the board's bylaws, before a vote is taken on an agenda item, the public is given opportunity to comment on the specific item under consideration. We will offer an opportunity for public comment on these items prior to a potential vote. If members of the public would like to provide comment on these specific agenda items, please email Marilyn Schneider, our State Board Executive, at SchneiderM S C H N as in Nancy, E I D E R M at Michigan.gov. This is the same contact information for public participation that is listed on the MDE homepage where you join the meeting, Please be sure to note the specific item on which you would like to comment. All other public comments will occur immediately following lunch. Ms. Marilyn Schneider, our State Board Executive, will now introduce the members of the State Board of Education.
Yes, welcome. You see most of these board members on the screen, but we have perfect attendance today. Dr. Albrecht is president from Dearborn. Dr. Pamela Pugh, vice president from Saginaw. Ms. Tiffany Tilly, secretary from Southfield. Mr. Tom McMillan, treasurer from Oakland Township. Dr. Judith Pritchett, NASB delegate and State Board of Education Legislative Committee member from Washington Township. The NASB delegate is the Board's Association, National Association of State Boards of Education, and Dr. Pritchett represents Michigan's Board on that National Association. Ms. Ellen Kojan-Lipton, Chair of the Board's Legislative Committee from Huntington Woods. Ms. Nikki Snyder, SBE Legislative Committee member from Dexter. Mr. Jason Strahan, SBE Legislative Committee member from Novi. Ms. Patty Redinger, Governor's Director of Federal Affairs and Acting Policy Director. Mr. Owen Bondano, this year's Michigan Teacher of the Year, serving for the 2020-21 school year. And when he is not at a board meeting, he is teaching English to freshmen in Oak Park schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marilyn. Marilyn, do we have Dr. Caldune with us yet? You're on mute.
Good morning. I am here.
Good morning, Dr. Caldune. Let me introduce you. You deserve a proper introduction. We appreciate you being with us today. We know you have a busy schedule. The next agenda item is a presentation by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. We welcome and are pleased to have with us Dr. Janay Caldune, Chief Medical Executive for the State of Michigan and Chief Deputy Director for Health in the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. This is an informational presentation and does not require board action. We have a limited time slot, given Dr. Caldune's press schedule today. There will be a 10-minute presentation followed by 10 minutes of questions and answers. Thank you again for joining us, Dr. Caldune.
One moment. Oops, one moment while I get my slide presentation going here. Just one moment. All right, can you all see my slides?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. Transitioning. So good morning. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with the board this morning. I'm going to give a brief update on our COVID-19 response. So this slide shows the state's cumulative case counts. Now, Michigan's there in the purple, and this just compares us to a handful of select states when it comes to how the trajectory of cases has rolled out throughout the pandemic. Michigan, early on, as you're well aware, was one of the hardest-hit states, but we had very proactive measures. Leadership of our governor, of course, put in place things that really saved lives and prevented spread of the virus. And so we kept our cases somewhat low compared to some other states, or definitely lower than it could have been. And then, like many other states, you can see right there at about the 250 mark, we started seeing an uptick in cases. That was right around November, December, where we, similar to other states, saw an increase. And then you can see where that purple line, right about the 300, 325 mark, starts to level off again. That is after we put in very targeted, strategic measures in the late fall, early winter, again, keeping our case counts very low, quite frankly, compared to a lot of other states. And then you can see that last inflection point right around the 375, 400 mark. That is our most recent surge that we saw in the state, where basically what this shows is that what that surge ended up doing is bringing us cumulatively very similar to where other states really already were. But Michigan has, by and large, done a great job of slowing how our cases have spread across the state, and quite frankly, getting more shots at arms, getting more people vaccinated as the pandemic has rolled out. This slide shows, this is not cumulative, this is by date as far as cases compared by age group. So you can see early on, and of course, you recall, early on, we did not have sufficient testing. No one in the country had sufficient testing. But of those who did receive a test, it was certainly our older population who had the highest case rate and unfortunately also the highest death rate. That has changed throughout the pandemic. Certainly in this most recent surge, we saw younger individuals who had higher case rates. A lot of that is because of our vaccinations, and they rolled out, as you all know, protecting our most vulnerable and older individuals first. And so more recently, we've seen younger age groups that have been more significantly impacted. As of right now, all age groups by decade are decreasing in their case rates. You can see there, age 30 to 39, they have the highest case rates, followed by the 10 to 19-year-old and 20 to 29-year-old age groups. So that's really important to note, is that this most recent surge had had younger individuals. And you may recall, early in this past 2021 spring surge, the 10 to 19-year-old age group, for a moment there, had the highest case rate. This shows case rates, both average daily cases, but also the case rate. And again, similarly shows how it's changed and specifically decreased significantly over the past couple of months since the spring surge. And you can see the 10 to 19 and 20 to 29-year-old age group has changed the most when it comes to how much it's decreased more recently. So this shows a little bit about our vaccinations. I'm very proud of our vaccination efforts across the state. We've got over 8.4 million doses that have been administered. To date, almost 60% of people over the age of 16 have gotten at least one dose. Last month, Pfizer was authorized for the 12 to 15-year-old age group, and we've already got about 1 in 5 of those individuals who have gotten at least one dose. And even since last week, that would have been the three-week mark for the second dose of Pfizer, and we've got about 5% of that age group that are fully vaccinated. So that's really, really positive news. You can also see in the upper left that we do have different coverage rates across the state, depending on location, as far as how many people have been vaccinated. But we continue to aggressively work on our vaccination efforts. We're seeing a lot of our mass vaccination sites close down, but we are still very aggressively moving forward with vaccination efforts, really more based on neighborhoods, partnering with community-based organizations. We're also really making sure that our primary care offices, pediatrician offices, have the vaccine on site. We are in a different stage than we were even a few months ago when it comes to supply. So I have actually asked every pediatrician's office, every primary care office, you should be offering vaccine to all of your patients that are within your practice. And you should not, even though we want to make sure we are being as responsible as we can, we should not let a person who is ready to get vaccinated in that moment be turned away because we're worried about using every single dose in a vial. So we are really aggressively pushing vaccinations across the entire state. I want to spend a little bit of time, especially talking about schools, of course, and how we've been supporting our schools throughout the pandemic. The goal has been to protect our children, of course, and to promote in-person learning. You all know better than I, although I am a parent of three children, but how important in-person learning is, not just for their education, but for their physical and mental health, quite frankly. So that has been really one of our most important goals. But also, you know, the virus is not, kids are not immune to this virus, and there can actually be some very severe consequences when kids get the virus. You've probably heard of something called M I S C. And unfortunately, we've seen significant increases in that debilitating multi-organ inflammatory illness across the country and here in Michigan. And unfortunately, kids can lose their lives from that. So we focused, of course, on safety protocols. We all know masking, social distancing, washing hands, those things are kind of just bred in mud of protecting against COVID. Testing has been very important. Quarantine and isolation, of course, and then just rapid outbreak response and containing any outbreaks as best we can. So this is a snapshot of our testing results. And we've been, quite frankly, a national model when it comes to how we've supported our testing in schools. So both K through 12 students, as well as staff, and also, of course, with our sports teams for those age 13 to 19. So to date, actually, this is about a week old, but to date, you can see there, we've tested over 500,000 students. We saw under 4,000 or so of those come back positive. That is a low positivity rate, but let me be very clear. The reason for that testing is not because we believe that schools and youth are the main reason why we have COVID-19 in the state. To the contrary, we are actually making sure that the goal is to identify as many cases as we can so that we can prevent outbreaks from happening. So even though that positivity rate is low, that's still almost 4,000 children who were positive and may have otherwise been spreading it to other people and causing outbreaks had we not identified those. Similar to youth sports, you may recall, a couple of months ago, we had a lot of outbreaks associated with school sports. We implemented a testing mandate. And again, positivity rate is not high, but that was not the goal. The goal was to prevent outbreaks and, quite frankly, prevent children from having to quarantine and, of course, prevent them from getting sick with the virus themselves. So that's been really positive as far as how we've rolled that out. And the White House and CDC have actually been looking to us as far as a best practice for supporting in-person learning and children being able to do the activities that are important for their physical and mental health. We've actually gotten great feedback about our school testing program. This is just a snapshot here. Overall satisfaction with the program has been very high. We've actually trained every ISD across the state in how to administer these tests, how to send us their results. And it has been quite simple, actually, and easy to implement, which we've been pleased to receive that feedback. There are some reasons for people opting out of testing, but many people actually want more testing and want to continue it, not just now, but into the fall. Similar for our sports testing, I know it has been, it's been something new and something that, you know, I have a child who has to get tested every week now. But, you know, you just kind of go get the swab done and you come back. And it's really, once you start doing it, not that much of a challenge. But it's been nice to see this type of feedback, and we will continue to support this as we move forward through the pandemic and certainly into the fall. This is just a snapshot showing our outbreak investigations by type for the week leading up to Memorial Day. K through 12 school outbreaks was the number-one site, actually, where we were identifying outbreaks. Of course, I want to be very, it's important to understand the caveats with identifying outbreaks. This is where we are able to, one, make sure there's testing, but also, when there's case investigation and contact tracing, we're able to identify places where people have been when they have a positive test, and so we can identify those outbreaks. If there are places where there may not be a testing mandate, there may not be a reporting mandate. For example, restaurants, they don't mandate you to get a test when you go to a restaurant. It can be more difficult to identify outbreaks in those settings because people aren't testing and may not be reporting when they speak to public health staff. But of the information that we do have, K through 12 schools are still our highest right now when it comes to the number of outbreaks that are being investigated by local public health. So as we've moved forward with the pandemic and following, of course, CDC guidelines, we've also pivoted to support, again, in-person learning. And so this shows a snapshot of the algorithm for how we may think about a child having to quarantine after being exposed to someone else with COVID-19. And so on the right there, what's really exciting is that if a student is fully vaccinated and they have no symptoms, they do not have to be isolated, they don't have to be tested, they don't have to quarantine, they can really go about their regular business, which is great. Vaccines really do allow us to continue keeping children in school. For those who are not fully vaccinated and they have been exposed to someone who are identified as a close contact, so that's within six feet for more than 15 minutes, if that exposure happened in the classroom specifically, I'm kind of going down the middle of the slide now, and full mitigation measures were in place in the classroom. So there was masking, there was distancing, and the student was within three to six feet of the case during the exposure. And they have symptoms, of course, they have to isolate. Anyone who's got, is sick, has a fever, and they've been exposed, we have to assume they have COVID, and they should be isolating. But if they don't have symptoms, and that's really important, if they don't have symptoms, the mitigation measures like masking, distancing were in place, they're still a close contact, maybe they were four feet away from another child who had a mask on, they can actually continue to attend school, still notify the parents and make sure you're still masking, but that is a path forward for that child to actually continue staying in school, which is really important. Of course, continuing to monitor for symptoms, we talk to the parents, the school will talk to the parents and notify them. But that's, again, an important way to keep the child in school. So finally, I want to talk about our current epidemic orders and where we're going. As of June 1, there is no limit on the number of people who can gather at a residence, so someone's home, whether it's indoor or outdoors, we don't have any limits there. Of course, people who are not fully vaccinated should continue to wear masks at all times when indoors, when eating or drinking. There's currently no limit on the number of people who can gather outdoors, and face masks are not required outdoors either. There is an overall capacity limit on indoor establishments. So that's limited to 25 people or 50% of the limits established by the Fire Marshal, whichever is greater. And then we do have a mandate currently in place for individuals who are not fully vaccinated to have to wear masks when they are inside. And then on July 1, broad mask orders will be lifted, but we are currently considering what other very targeted mask orders may need to be in place to protect the most vulnerable or those who may not be able to be vaccinated at this time. But that is still, we're still talking about that, still not sure what will happen. But on July 1, broad mask mandates for the entire population will go away. So I will stop there and see if there are any questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Caldune. We appreciate your presentation. I see Mr. McMillan in the chat with a question.
Yeah, thank you, doctor. I want to just focus on infection fatality rates, and you obviously know what those are, right? Okay, so from what the CDC says, children 0 to 17 years old, the infection fatality rate is two per 100,000. According to the National Center for Biotechnology Information, the infection fatality rate for children from the flu, not COVID, the first one was COVID, from the flu, is one in 1,000. So, you know, the IFR is maybe 50 times worse for the flu than COVID for children 0 to 17. So I just don't see why, you know, and I think we're going to look back and see the masking of children is just with horror. And I think people will probably be prosecuted for prosecuting Governor Snyder for what happened in Flint. I certainly think the abuse of children knowingly, that they don't need, they don't need, you know, an unapproved FDA vaccine, they don't need masks because they are much less at risk from the flu or from COVID than the flu. I know that early on, the argument was is that they may go home and talk, you know, we're parents or somebody, but now we've got the vaccine, or it was teachers, but now people who want it can get the vaccine. So, you know, I just, I think it's abusive. I think it's horrific what we're doing, forcing children who are at 50 times less risk of death than the flu. And the CDC, up until recently, for months and months, said that, you know, the flu is not as, is more problematic for kids than COVID. So, I mean, I just, I think it's inexplicable. I think people will be held accountable, including yourself, for what we're doing to these kids. I think it's horrible.
Mr. McMillan, did you, I mean, you indicated you had a question.
Well, I guess I'd like for her to acknowledge, I mean, do you acknowledge that the flu is more serious for children than COVID, just looking at the IFR? For healthy kids?
Well, I would say that this is a new virus. I think there's no question about that. We're still learning more and more about this virus. We're certainly in the middle of a pandemic. And a lot of those numbers, it depends on how you're testing. So we often don't even know how many people have the flu, and quite frankly, the testing of children as well. So you always have to have a caveat where you're looking at those types of numbers. I will say that we know the science shows that masks work in preventing the spread of the virus. There are still people who cannot get vaccinated. So people who may be immunocompromised, or even if they get the vaccine, the vaccine doesn't work as well. So there is still a benefit to preventing this virus from spreading. And then I'll also add that we are still learning about this virus when it comes to, it's not just about death, it's about long COVID symptoms. So you've heard about that, right? So kids having myocarditis, enlarged heart, neurological, psychiatric concerns. We're still learning about this virus.
Well, we're also learning about vaccines.
Excuse me, I think I'm still speaking, finishing my point. Thank you. So we're still learning about this virus. And of course, as I mentioned, multi-inflammatory syndrome is something that's very serious, and we're still, unfortunately, seeing children lose their lives.
Yeah, the harm of masks, though, is going to be serious as well, and I wish you would acknowledge that, for especially kids. And the long-term effects of these vaccines that are unapproved by the FDA, obviously, they're not approved because they don't know the long-term effects. So there's going to, there could be potentially serious long-term effects. And here you are, you know, trying to advocate kids get vaccinated and penalizing those who don't. It's outrageous. I hope you'll be held accountable someday.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. Ms. Snyder, and then President Albrecht.
Thank you. I would just like to make a couple of comments. I think that there has been plenty of debate over the targeted strategies, doctor, that you mentioned that Governor Whitmer has put in place, and then also the concept of aggressive vaccination. There's plentiful debate around that. But one of the things that has been something that I think needs to be spoken out loud, truth that needs to be told and challenged, is from the beginning, and I've worked in healthcare for almost 20 years. I worked during the quarantine. And I was very concerned about the virus at first when I heard language like, "We've never heard of this virus." It's brand new. And when you say today to Michiganders that "we're still learning about the virus, it's new, this is a new virus," that is not the truth. And I will just, I will say it and keep saying it, it is not the truth. This is not a new virus. When we found out that it was SARS, SARS has been around for decades. It's something I learned in nursing school. It's a variant. We know what those viruses do. It could definitely be a stronger variant, which is what we've been discussing over the last several months. But let's be clear to people and tell the truth, it is not new. Still learning about it. We know what SARS is. My question to you is that at some point, when we shifted from the narrative of, "We know nothing about this virus, this is brand new, we know nothing," to "this is SARS," did we ever look back and say, "We've never responded to SARS this way?" Why are we responding to SARS this way now? And does the data support it? And should we shift gears? Because that would be best for children who are dying of suicide because they don't have access to in-person schooling. So there is so many outcomes and so many things that have come about as a result of facts and data. But one thing we can't say with truth and honesty is that this is new. It is not new. The second thing I will say is knowing that we've lived with decades for highly infectious respiratory, upper respiratory viruses like SARS. One of our standards of care in nursing and in healthcare is that when you walk into a patient's room who has that, who's tested positive, who is symptomatic, we wear N95 masks. N95 masks that are fitted and tested. That's what we do to protect our nurses. So when we say, "Gosh, you need to wear a mask, and you can't not wear a mask unless you've been vaccinated, or maybe you should start wearing two cloth masks," none of that is rooted in data and science. It's not appropriate, it, it's not telling the truth, and it's a very, very serious issue that we have wrought fear in our culture, in our society, in our people, based on things that are not facts. But ultimately, when I think about it and I reflect on it and I, and I tell people about what SARS is, I think to myself, "When did you realize that it was SARS? When you put it under the microscope? What, what, at what point did you realize it was SARS?" Because most people in healthcare, they're doing what they're told, they fear losing their job, but they know SARS. So when did we realize? When did the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services realize that? When did our governor hear from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, "This is SARS, this isn't something we know nothing about"?
Well, oh, thank you for your comment, I appreciate your opinions. We at the department do follow CDC, World Health Organization, national, international experts when it comes to the newness of this virus, and pretty much all reputable scientists understand that this is a, a new virus. I'm also a practicing emergency medicine physician, I fully understand N95s and fit testing and wearing different masks in different circumstances, and there are, depending on the virus and, and how you are protecting yourself, you can actually wear different masks based on that. And there is plenty of data out there about how masks do prevent the spread of the virus, but thank you for your opinion and your comment. And Superintendent Rice, Dr. Rice, I apologize, I do have to leave now, if that is okay.
Dr. Kaldun, if you could take one more question perhaps?
Absolutely.
From, actually, perhaps a question from our president, a question from our vice president, who have been waiting, Dr. Albridge and Dr. Pugh.
Yeah, I, I don't have a question, I'll be very brief. I just wanted to say thank you so much for all the work that you've done for the state. You know, some of us have lost loved ones to, to this, and we appreciate the fact that you guys have gone above and beyond. I know how hard you've worked, and, and the fact that you came here today and shared this information with us is very meaningful, and we really, really appreciate it, and I just wanted to say thank you for all you've done.
Thank you very much. Dr. Pugh? You're, you're on mute.
Let me start with thanking you, I will end with thanking you, I have some questions in between, though. One of my questions is, some of them I can look up, but my question is around the numbers that we saw spike, the deaths that we saw that occurred right at that time when we knew that Michigan was second for variants, right at the time when we knew that school was going to be opening and we were going to have children that had not been in school for over a year, also at the time of spring break, and we saw that huge peak. I, I heard you speaking, but I just don't understand why somebody did not step up and really actually exercise their authority, and, and, and from my understanding, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, the governor still has the authority to close schools, and will that happen again, where we see those spikes and, and it's out of our control and we, we cannot get something to take place from the top down? And I'll just say this, that we have to lead with equity, and at every step and turn, I still see that equity is an afterthought. I am so embarrassed by my board members here today because obviously, they are not concerned with certain children. When we talk about deaths, we know that, that there are certain populations, those that look like me and BIPOC communications, communities that were hit hardest. When we talk about those of us who know people, you know, it's not a question of, "Do we know? How many people do we know? How were we affected?" Not "if we were affected." I still have people in a week that have died in my family related to COVID. So I want to put that out there. But I think that COVID, right here at this board table, in the state and in this country, has really exhibited a privilege that all of us don't have the opportunity to have experience. And, and, and I can't even get out everything that I wanted to say. There were questions that I wanted to ask you, hopefully you got that, but I think the cruelty that was just expressed here, again, privilege that was expressed here, ignorance that's expressed here, has happened across the board, and it has to do with us not really addressing and digging out this, the roots of inequities that continue to be exhibited. I'll just say with our schoolchildren, we had schools that had not been in classrooms. So that was, first of all, protecting us, our numbers, but when they did go, we saw those spikes, and that was even with vaccinations. And when we talk about vaccines, and I looked at the numbers that you presented, I did not see the disparity in vaccination rates for some communities. I did not see the disparities in the building conditions that have been caused by discriminatory funding practices. And all of these things tie together, and we have to look at this holistically, but I will say thank you for what you have done, what the governor has done. I expect more, I expect authority to be utilized when it comes to saving lives. I think that we lost lives for no reason. I know that masks continue to need to be worn. I'm an environmental health person by trade, by, that is my degree, I've worked over 20 years in, in that field. I know all about fit testing for, for masks, and, and at, at a time of a crisis that we've never seen before, thank God, we were able to get our hands on something that protected us, and I think that it's cruel and inhumane to promote that that's not a need, and that, that, that's to my board members, and, and I just have to say that. And thank you, and, and thank you for serving your state, and thank you for, for utilizing your expertise to debunk ignorance and, and confusion and conspiracy theories.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Dr. Kaldun, we want to be solicitous of your time. I want to thank you for your leadership in a very, very difficult moment. It takes a lot of courage to lead in a pandemic, we appreciate you. It's, it's easier to reflect after the fact than it is to reflect real time, and we know that this has been hard for people, not simply in the state, but across the country and across the world. We want to, we want to let you go, continue your schedule for the day, we'll continue our meeting, but thank you so much for your, for your, for your time today and your presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much for having me.
You bet, thank you. Ms. Snyder, and then Mr. McMillan.
Pam, I'm going to address you very directly. When you use words like cruelty, embarrassment, ignorance, inhumanity in response to things that are disagreements in policy, you're attacking people's character, you're using personality to win over what we could do and have a different type of discussion. And when we think about coming together and talking about board norms, this is exactly what I've been talking about in the last several months. As we come to a table, as members of a board, expected to serve the people of Michigan with respect and honor, that is not what it looks like. And maybe we should be talking about a board norm where our, our board leader can see that. There are Robert's Rules of Orders that lead in that respect, and yes, it does take courage, Michael. It is not okay to treat each other the way that you are treating board members that you disagree with and that disagree with you. It is not ignorance, it's not cruelty, it is not an embarrassment. I will not carry the shame you continue to seek to heap on me, and it is not inhumane. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much, Mr. McMillan, and then Dr. Albridge.
Shoot. Well, I'm having, I'm having audio and video issues, but I just wanted to, you know, say that I am disappointed with Pam's said. I can under, I can hear the critical race theory that she's advocating, privilege, I know it's got white privilege, so board members who are white might not, a lot of division that CRT promotes, roots of inequities. I mean, these are, these are diabolical views and theories that if we're going to allow them to come in here, you know, it's going to be a difficult rest of, rest of the board meetings in the, in the near future. So I hope that, you know, these kind of Marxist theories of divide and conquer will not be the ones that are being used here at our board.
And thank you very much, Mr. McMillan, Dr. Albridge, and then Ms. Lipton.
All right, well, thank you. I just want to, I, I would like us to take it down just a little bit here, and maybe everyone take a deep breath, but I, I did want to, to share, you know, there seems to be a lot of back and forth, but not a lot of self-reflection. And with all due respect, we just had a very prominent guest join us at our state board table, if you will, and she was not treated well. And I would hope that we don't see this continue into the future. I think the first and foremost, we should always make it a point to thank someone for taking their time to come and share information and data with us. But, you know, this, this person was then subjected to, "You don't know anything, you're," I think she was almost, pretty much called a liar to her face. You know, none of that is appropriate. We have to find a way to express ourselves that is way more, a little less accusatory and, and disrespectful, with all due respect, completely disrespectful. It is fine if we all disagree, but there's got to be a way for us to express that without it devolving into a language that insinuates that if you don't agree with me, that somehow you're lying to me. This is someone who knows her stuff. You may not agree with it, but she's coming to share information with us. So can we just please take a step back, take a breather, you know, maybe instead of making statements, and I apologize, I know someone is texting me, it has nothing to do with this meeting, I just want to share that. But, you know, just, instead of, of making statements, why don't we try to ask questions so that we can learn more than showing how much we personally know about something? I, I'm just asking, can we please just try to be a little more respectful of people who come to this board? Thank you.
Thank you, President Albridge. Ms. Lipton and Vice President Pugh.
Yes, I will withdraw my comments. Dr. Albridge, thank you, you encapsulated my suggestions to the board very well, and again, just to reiterate that when we ask, as an elected body, we are, in my opinion, not representing the people of this state well by inviting officials, you know, academics, what have you, to provide information, and then to use that platform for reasons other than the simple inquisitive quest for knowledge. And perhaps when we discuss our board norms, we may want to discuss the appropriate conduct of, of testimony, and perhaps think about making public statements during the time in the agenda where that is reserved, which is board member comments at the end. I think it would certainly better serve our constituents and certain provide, provide clarity on the agenda as well.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Dr. Pugh?
My apologies for not being able to get off mute, and I wish that I could, you know, apologize for not talking nicely, for not getting upset, show my emotion. I wish that I could be more orderly, and I wish that I could apologize and say sorry for that, but, but I, but I will not, not when we have board members that, first of all, to me, were very disrespectful of someone who knows their stuff, who is serving this state at a more, most horrific time, and to be questioned by what is being spewed and is conspiracy theory, and that there are reporters that are listening that will print this material. And see, my community can't afford that. My family cannot afford that. So I can't apologize for making sure that I'm very clear when I say that what you're saying is mean-spirited, in all the other words I said, I, I won't, I won't put them here, but they are without thinking of other populations, without thinking about anyone besides yourselves. And, and, and let me say this, let me say this. You're speaking from your, your space, and you're not thinking about these other populations that clearly have, have been hit hard. So I, 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 if, if that's being unorderly, then, then that is, that's what it is.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Any more comments or questions from board members before we move on? Okay, hearing and seeing none. The next item on the agenda is educational updates related to COVID-19. In Michigan, since our last state board meeting, the number of cases has risen from 100, from 865,349 to 890,764, an increase of under 3% in the last four weeks, with the number of deaths increasing from 18,239 to 19,376, a rise of 6.2%. After eight weeks of increasing cases from February 13th to April 17th, as Dr. Kaldun noted, we've had seven weeks of declining cases. Since our peak seven weeks ago, our weekly number of cases has dropped 94%. Positivity rates are down across the state. Worldwide, more than 2.1 billion vaccine doses have been administered. In Michigan, as Dr. Kaldun noted, more than 8.4 million vaccine doses have been administered. According to the CDC, almost 60%, 59.7% of Michigan's population 16 years old or over have received at least an initial dose of vaccine. I have several quick updates on a range of topics. First, the governor's budget. The week before last, the governor submitted a school aid fund spending framework, essentially an update of her original budget request to the legislature, amended with the knowledge of May revenue estimating conference changes in revenue. With a large increase in state school aid fund revenue due in good measure to the injection of federal revenue into the economy, the governor proposed the following: a doubling of the original budgeted increase in foundation allowance to between $163 and $326 per student, funding to eliminate the gap between the minimum and maximum foundation allowance districts, a doubling of the equity weights for at-risk students, for special needs students, an increase in the equity weight- An increase in the equity weight for English language learners. A quadrupling in the per pupil funding for CTE students from $35 to $140 per pupil. More money for isolated districts. An additional $200 million in the next school year and $150 million in the following year for declining enrollment districts. Additional funding for counselors, nurses, social workers, and school psychologists. Additional funding for children's mental health. Additional funding for a range of programs for special needs children. An additional one-time funding for school districts' capital needs. And I might add, a number of those board are right on top of state strategic education plan goals. With undesignated Federal American Rescue Plan funding, the governor proposed more funding for guidance and career counselors. Funding for balanced calendar implementation. Funding for Grow Your Own programs supportive of Goal 7 of the state's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. Additional funding for CTE, AP, IB, and dual enrollment programs supportive of Goal 4 of the state's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. Subsidizing of teacher loan debt supportive of Goal 7 of the state's Strategic Education Plan. Subsidizing of the cost of teacher college credits, again, supportive of Goal 7 of the state's Strategic Education Plan. And finally, a marketing campaign to promote the teaching profession, also supportive of Goal 7 of the state's Strategic Education Plan. With respect to the American Rescue Plan, at our last board meeting, the board heard from Deputy Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Mr. Kyle Garant, on the process and timetable for our state American Rescue Plan submission. We met the U.S. Department of Education deadline with a transmittal yesterday evening. I want to thank the strong efforts of the MDE team that worked on this plan on a very, very tight timeframe. Board, you are aware that at January State Board of Education meeting, I began to share reflections about the need to return not to normal, but to a new, better normal next year. Over the last few months, I've shared several investments in public education, so-called gifts that keep on giving, that local districts and the state legislature need to consider as they determine how to allocate their federal pandemic relief funds. Four of these potential investments that I've recommended are among our Top 10 state strategic education plan goals. Goal 1, the expansion of preschool to all eligible children. Goal 2, the improvement of early literacy. Goal 3, the improvement of student health, safety, and wellness. And Goal 7, the addressing of the teacher shortage. I will be discussing the importance of the expansion of preschool to all eligible children during my report to the superintendent this afternoon. Other recommended investments, other gifts that keep on giving that I've shared over the last few months, not simply at board meetings, but in video, in memos, were associated with more time to make up for time forgone in the pandemic. The closing of the digital divide to permit all children to access technology at home as a tool for instructional enrichment. And the broadening and deepening of community partnerships to help expand opportunities for children beyond the school day, year, and walls. Many organizations across the country have provided their thoughts and reports regarding this pivot to a new, better normal. The United States Department of Education, the American Association of Superintendents and Administrators, National Education Association slash American Federation of Teachers, and the Washington DC-based Learning Policy Institute, among others, have shared reflections and reports. And we in the department have in turn lifted up the reports of these agencies and organizations with our local education agencies and our intermediate school districts. Today, the board will hear another of these efforts, the report to the governor's Student Recovery Advisory Council. Mr. Kevin Polston, Chair of the SRAC, will present to the board in the afternoon regarding this report, four of whose five recommendations are directly related to three of our state's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan goals. Goal 1, the expansion of GSRP preschool. Goal 7, the addressing of the teacher shortage. And Goal 8, the provision of adequate and equitable school funding. State test numbers. Almost all of our state end-of-year M-step tests have been completed and submitted to the state by now. Most of our outstanding tests are from districts that chose to do paper and pencil assessments this year. Approximately 71% of elementary students in grades 3 through 5 this school year have taken the M-step tests this spring. Roughly the same percentage of 11th graders took the SAT. Approximately 65% of middle school students in grades 6 and 7 have taken the state summative tests. The percentage of students that took state assessments is unevenly distributed across the state. For some districts, the percentage is close to the percentage in normal years, at or above 95%. For other districts, the percentage is somewhat or quite a bit lower. Immediately after this presentation and any related questions and answers, the board will be considering two resolutions from its legislative committee. First of these resolutions is associated with third grade retentions. State Board of Education, the State Department of Education, and several education organizations, including the Michigan Parent Teacher Association, have urged the state legislature to suspend the retention, the retention portion of the Read by Grade 3 law. The legislature has yet to act on this recommendation. And SEPI, the Center for Educational Performance and Information, has sent out letters to the parents of 3,324 students to indicate that these students are subject to retention in third grade based on their M-step reading scores. The board will be voting on a resolution today not to urge the state legislature to suspend the retention portion of the Read by Grade 3 law for a year. You've already done that, but rather to urge parents to avail themselves of good cause exemptions to avoid retentions of their children. Where the second resolution on which you'll be voting this morning is on the A through F accountability system. You are already on record in strong opposition to the A through F accountability system. Resolution that you are considering this morning is not associated with your general opposition, but rather with the absence of logic associated with running the A through F system in a year when some districts tested almost all of their students and others tested very few of their students. As you may recall, five of the eight elements associated with the A through F accountability system are directly related to state summative test performance. It seems ridiculous to run the system and rank schools based on the system when some of the schools will have tested virtually no children and others virtually all of their children. Regardless of one's general beliefs about the utility of the A through F accountability system, in this specific year, the state legislature should set aside A through F as a matter of fairness. Immediately following the board's two votes on legislative committee recommendations, the board will hear two presentations, first on Michigan out-of-school time standards of quality, and second on childcare and development fund state plan and market rate survey. In the afternoon, in addition to the presentation by Mr. Polston, the board will hear a presentation by State Teacher of the Year, Mr. Owen Bondano, reports by State Board President Cassandra Albrecht, and by me, and a legislative update by Director of the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, Mr. Martin Ackley, and Legislative Committee Chair, Ms. Ellen Lipton. It will also vote on the resolution regarding charter school financial transparency. Finally, the board will consider a resolution of appreciation to outgoing, and I mean that in both senses of the term, Chief Deputy Superintendent, Ms. Sheila Alice. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time. And in the absence of questions, I would be happy to move forward into our board votes on resolutions.
Going once and twice and thrice. All right. Rebuilding up a little bit of energy from the early excitement. Let's move on then. Next item on the agenda is discussion and action on the resolution on Read by Grade 3 exemptions. Board's legislative committee met on May 24, 2021, and discussed the writing of resolutions by staff for consideration by the full State Board of Education. We will discuss the first of two resolutions related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. Martin Ackley, our Director of the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, will project the draft resolution on Read by Grade 3 exemptions onto the grade, onto the screen. Ms. Lipton, as chairperson of the board's legislative committee, is there anything you would like to say regarding this resolution?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Rice. I would just like to thank the members of the legislative committee as well as everyone who participated in the discussion in looking for what I think is a very, very important role for us as board members to urge the legislature to move in certain areas, but also to advise the parents of the students that we were elected to serve of their, of their rights and responsibilities within the law. And we had a robust discussion and this resolution was, in fact, passed unanimously by the legislative committee.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Mr. Ackley, if you'd be kind enough to, to read the resolution or if Chairperson Lipton would like to do the honors, it's as you choose. And then, once we have moved and seconded the resolution, I'd be happy to answer Dr. Pugh's question relative to, to, to testing.
I'd be glad to read it unless Ms. Lipton would like to read it.
No, that's, that's fine, Mr. Ackley.
Whereas in 2016, the Michigan Legislature passed a law that requires schools to identify learners who are struggling with reading and writing and to provide additional help. The law states that third graders repeat third grade if they are more than one grade level behind grade three. Whereas if a third grade child's reading score on the English Language Arts M-step is more than one year below grade level, the state Center for Educational Performance and Information, SEPI, is required to send a letter to the parent or legal guardian of that child informing the parent guardian that the child has been identified for retention in the third grade for the following school year. Whereas if the parent or guardian does not agree that the child should be retained in third grade, the parent can request a meeting with the child's school and file a good cause exemption within 30 days of receiving a notice regarding potential retention. Whereas if the child or guardian requests a good cause exemption and one is granted by the school district, the child will be allowed to enroll in fourth grade in the next school year. Whereas state law requires that the child's school leadership must make itself available to discuss the child's progress. And whereas the child's school needs to have a decision whether or not to retain the child 30 days before the first day of the next school year. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the State Board of Education urges parents and guardians to fully engage in their right, written in state law, to seek from their local school superintendents, when applicable, good cause exemptions to the required retention of their children. And that school superintendents inform parents and guardians of all possible good cause exemptions available to parents and guardians and carefully consider all ramifications associated with retention before rendering a decision to retain a student.
Thank you, Mr. Ackley. If I could have a, a motion and a second? Do I have a, a motion by our, our Chair, Ms. Lipton? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a, it looked like a double second. So I have a second and a third. If, if two is good, three must be better. Dr. Pugh, first question in discussion.
My question, Dr. Rice, if you could repeat the testing data that you gave for us, because I want to make sure that we bring it into focus. You gave us a lot of good information, but focusing it in on this conversation, because, you know, you know, let us not lose sight of the fact that we have just a, a different time for testing because we are in the midst of a crisis, a crisis that has hit some communities worse than others. We have parents who are dealing with so many different things now, and so now they have to be looking for this letter and, and responding to a letter as well as the inconsistencies in, in testing due to some children being in person, some children not, and all the other things that, that are going on in schools right now.
You bet. So 71%, approximately 71% of our third through fifth graders took M-step this year. Approximately 65% of our sixth and seventh graders took the M-step this year. And approximately 71% of our 11th graders took the SAT this year. Those are not uniform percentages across the state, as, as I mentioned, as you point out again, that they are quite a bit different. In certain communities that were mostly in person, at a minimum through the testing window and more substantially throughout the school year, the testing percentages are higher. In those districts that were more substantially or completely at a distance this school year and/or during all or parts of the testing window, the percentages of testing were substantially lower. 3,324 letters have been sent to parents of third graders across the state indicating that those, that 3,324 children, third graders, have been identified for retention based on their third grade M-step reading scores.
Thank you.
Are there any other, other questions or any other numbers you'd like clarification on?
No, that's.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Dr. Albrecht notes that, that she does have to leave the meeting briefly. So board, just, just a cognizance associated with that. And Mr. McMillan, to you, a question.
Yeah, I, I'm glad that the legislative committee put this forward. I have been on record opposing this legislation and I'm glad that we've urged the legislature to repeal it. I'm wondering, you know, parents can get lost in bureaucracy. Sometimes it's overwhelming. Is there any, maybe, is there a thought that maybe we could put in the resolved a phone number? I mean, do we have some kind of an advocacy phone number at MDE or something if a parent is kind of feeling lost or not getting, you know, attention or regarding this matter? You know, were they, since this is going to be a press, you know, out in the press, maybe it would be printed. So I'm just wondering if there's something we can do to kind of help parents do what we're asking them to do. It's a good thing, but I just, I didn't know if we could include it in the result or something.
So the letter, the letter that SEPI wrote, that, that we helped write when this was originally a, an issue, helps parents navigate that, that space. I agree 100% with you. This is, this is tricky territory and it's tricky territory, not simply And it's tricky territory not simply for parents, but it's tricky territory for administrators as well. I can tell you that your reflection on read by grade three is shared by many. That this is, it's overkill. It's overkill from the state level. That we ought to be working on literacy at the local school district level and improvements on, and not thinking that we can improve literacy simply with retention. So I believe that the SEPI letter will help direct parents. I believe we've given an awful lot of guidance to local school superintendents about good cause exemptions. Superintendents have the ability to make determinations regarding retentions. And many, many, many superintendents have indicated that they do not believe that this is a valuable intervention for children. So we've been working it on both sides, both with respect to parents and with respect to administrators in local school districts and teachers in local school districts, and have advocated that our educators work with their parents very, very closely on this issue. Thank you for the question. I note that Patty Redinger also has to depart for a brief period of time as well. Ms. Snyder, a question to you.
Yeah, just to piggyback on to what Tom just asked about an advocacy number for parents to call. But my curiosity is, within the letter that they get from SEPI, does it describe what their child's score was and where that falls within a year behind, more than a year behind, two years? Like, how much information do they have at their fingertips before they might call? And whereas state law requires the child's school leadership must make itself available to discuss? I'm just curious, before they even get to that space, if they were to open the letter, how much information do they have?
Right. So the letter essentially says that their child is below a particular score, 1152, which is determined psychometrically to be at least a year behind grade level at the end of third grade. That's a whole, that's a whole technical conversation. But essentially, there's a single reference point, 1152. And the indication is that your child has scored below that and as a result is eligible for retention. We have spent the last few years working with local school districts, not simply on conversations around retention and good cause exemptions, but rather on all the positive elements of the read by grade three law. The encouragement of reading coaches at the ISD level. And of course, we've got more reading coaches at the ISD level. The requirement to put in place individualized reading plans for young people, particularly those that are struggling. The value of one-on-one tutoring or mentoring, the value of additional reading, and, and, and. So we've worked hard with them, not simply on the preparation for potential retention, but all the positive elements toward getting their child, toward getting children at or above that 1152 mark. So I wouldn't say that the letter is granular in nature. It's, it attempts to write at a level that parents can and understand and not be overly wonky, if you will.
So just a few reflections on that and maybe a recommendation if the letters have not gone out and if there's an ability to mold it. But it seems like the positives in the law with or without retention, I'm not referring to that right now, but that to encourage that discussion at 1152 as the cutoff is really important. I think that's good on some level. It shows that the schools and the parents will connect about growth, academic growth. But the thing is, is that for parents to get a letter that just has that singular 1152 and they can't put things into perspective, it just seems like an awful lot of stress to put on top of their plate after everything that we've asked them to go through in the last, you know, year and a half. I don't know if it's possible to come up with a chart that is more direct about, you know, your child is within it, you know, at about a year behind or more than a year, one to two years or even worse yet possible. So that there's more of a sense, I think most parents could understand that and it wouldn't be too wonky. And when they open up the letter, it wouldn't create more fear and more, just more on top of more is kind of what I'm thinking.
Right.
Just a thought.
So a few things. First of all, as I mentioned, the 3,324 letters have been sent. They were, they were sent in the last few weeks by SEPI. There is some clarity that the score is at least a grade level below grade level, the end of third grade. And there is an explanation of the ways that parents can appeal retention, recognizing that many administrators aren't going to necessarily need the appeal because they themselves aren't going to be supportive of retention and are going to reject retention as an intervention for those children. The letter is SEPI's letter. It is not the department's letter by law. It is SEPI's letter to send out. And we worked with SEPI on that letter quite some time ago. But it is, in the final analysis, by state statute, SEPI's letter to craft and to send out. Snyder, thank you. Thank you for the question and the suggestion. Dr. Pritchett, question slash comment from you?
Thank you. I certainly appreciate Tom's comments about trying to get information and Nikki's. And I think we're all on the same page on this one. Trying to get pertinent information out to our parents as quickly as possible about third grade retention. I appreciate the fact that most schools, most building principals, school administrators are reaching out to these parents right now anyways. But I also understand that in some families and in some communities, this becomes overwhelming. Is there a way in which we can put a title on this, assuming it's passed? Title on this resolution when it's sent to the press? This is more of a question probably from Marty. That will draw parents' attention to it? You know, people don't read past about the first or second paragraph sometimes. And so I'm just trying to get information out to parents that will kind of, you know, have them look at a title, for example, instead of just resolution about third grade reading. That could mean 100 different things. But something very, very specific in the title. And it doesn't need to be a group write, "I trust Marty", hopefully, just something that'll grab their attention. So they'll go, "Oh, wait a minute, I should read this. I'll contact my school." Because that's in essence what they need to do, is start with their classroom, the classroom teacher, the principal, because that's where the action's going to take place. So that's just a suggestion on my part because I too am concerned about the fact that, you know, we need to get the parents involved in this, guardians involved in this as quickly as possible because some schools are actually finishing up this week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just before I turn to Mr. Ackley, just a couple of notes. One, there is a 30-day appeal window in state law, and that is not related to when schools end. So that 30-day appeal window stretches from the sending of the letter out 30 days irrespective of whether school has ended or not. And local school districts are well aware of that responsibility. That's number one. Number two, it is helpful that parents advocate for their children relative to third grade retention. We absolutely want that to happen. But we are also aware by state statute that superintendents ultimately make these decisions and that they need to do the right thing, preferably in partnership with parents. But they need to do what's in the best interests of young people in partnership with our parents, if that absolutely all possible. Mr. Ackley, your reflections on Dr. Pritchett's comment slash question?
Yeah, we can certainly craft a headline or a lead to this that will get to that, absolutely. And by the way, I think the cutoff score is 1252.
1252. Thank you very much for the correction. Ms. Lipton, you have a question.
No, it wasn't a question. I was just saying that I like all of these suggestions. That was certainly the intent in our committee's discussion to really amplify a parent's right under the law, which sometimes can get lost in the weeds. And so I was just reflecting that perhaps that last paragraph, that be it resolved, we could put that in bold, you know, bold face so that it really jumps out as another tool to amplify what we're trying to get across is a parent's right to seek this exemption if they feel it's in the best interest of their child and the school superintendent's obligation to inform parents of all of their possible rights under the law.
Okay. Does anybody, does anybody have an objection to that small but important suggestion in formatting? Hearing none and there being no change in wording, I won't take a roll call vote on it. Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Other questions or comments regarding this resolution? Hearing and hearing and seeing none. Marilyn, if you'd be kind enough to take a roll call vote?
Yes. Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strayhorn?
Yes.
Tilly? Tilly? Tiffany Tilly? Okay. Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Marilyn. The next item on the agenda is discussion and action on the resolution on ramifications of the A through F system for the 2020-2021 school year. Marty Ackley will project the draft resolution on ramifications of the A through F system for the 2020-2021 school year onto the screen. Ms. Lipton, again, as Chairperson of the Legislative Committee, is there anything you would like to say regarding this resolution?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Rice. Again, I would like to thank the members of the committee, as well as all those that worked on this. The, this was, again, something that was discussed and passed unanimously in the Legislative Committee. And the, just the only additional comment that I would add is that I do think that, you know, one of the important roles of this body is to be fully, you know, to be fully cognizant of the stresses that parents are feeling, what have you. And not only is the A through F system, I mean, we can talk about the, you know, individual feelings about that, but it's really to run this system when the results are so evenly distributed. Really, my fear is that it would produce more harm than good. The, and I think that the data would actually be, would be very misleading to parents. And when we're potentially misleading parents, that causes me a great deal of angst. And so I think that this resolution is really doubly important, not just on recognizing the, you know, potential overall flaws in the system, but really, in this particular moment, the type of misleading information that would go to parents, I think, would cause, you know, would cause a potential harm. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Mr. Ackley, if you'd be kind enough to read the draft resolution into the record?
Absolutely. Whereas the State Board of Education is on record attesting that the legislatively mandated A through F school accountability system is a narrow and therefore flawed system. Whereas the State Board of Education urged that the state legislature not enact this system into state law three years ago. Whereas the state legislature did in fact pass the A through F school accountability system into law as Public Act 601 of 2018. Whereas at a minimum, in the midst of a pandemic, we should not be using any high-stakes accountability measures associated with state summative assessments. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we urge the state legislature to set aside the A through F school accountability system during the pandemic and affirm that the Michigan Department of Education does not have to calculate and publish the A through F grades for Michigan schools for the 2020-21 school year.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Ackley. And Mr. McMillan, a comment. I beg your pardon. If we could have a motion and a second, and then to Mr. McMillan for his comment. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
So we have a motion, we have a second. And Mr. McMillan, to you for the first comment in discussion.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate this and support it. As many know, I was, when I was in the legislature, I was the lead legislator, particularly on the Republican side, of fighting A to F. And then, when I was on the board, when it was heading towards being implemented, I, you know, led the effort to fight it as well. So I certainly support this. I note that the second paragraph, it says, "Three years ago, we urged the state legislature not to enact this system." Maybe at some point, not today, but we should probably soon go on rec, we should pass another resolution, you know, urging the legislature to repeal it, just so we're on record, because that kind of stood out to me. Because I know, you know, we'd have to reference three years ago when I know that we're still all opposing it in its totality, not just, not just, you know, during the pandemic. So that was just my thoughts.
Fair enough. Thank you very much. Any other board members' comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none. Marilyn, if we could do a roll call vote, please?
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strayhorn?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. The next agenda item is a presentation of Michigan Out-of-School Time Standards of Quality. The current Michigan Out-of-School Time Standards of Quality were approved by the Michigan State Board of Education in 2013. The revised set of standards being presented reflects updates based on the most current research and best practices and would inform continuous improvement efforts of Michigan's out-of-school-time providers and programs. This presentation will be followed by a period of public comment and a request for approval of the standard. and a request for approval of the standards during the August 2021 board meeting. The presenters are Dr. Scott Kennick Schneck, Deputy Superintendent of P20 System and Student Transitions, Mr. Richard Lauer, Director of Preschool and Out of School Time Learning, and Ms. Lorraine Thorson, Manager of 21st Century Community Learning Centers. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Presenters, welcome. Good morning.
Great morning. Thank you, Dr. Rice, and thank you, board members, for allowing us some time this morning to talk about the updated Michigan out of school time standards of quality. Standards of quality were updated to align to Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, specifically Goal Two, which is to improve literacy achievement, and Goal Three, which is to improve health, safety, and wellness of all learners. The last time these were updated and approved was 2013. And so we bring these to you today for information and awareness. And as Dr. Rice has said, we'll go up for public comment back in front of you in August for approval. So to detail the standards, I am joined by Richard Lauer and Lorraine Thorson, and I'm going to turn the presentation over to them.
Thank you very much, and I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and put it into presentation mode. Hopefully, this works. Marilyn, can you confirm this is showing?
It is.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair, board members. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present the work facilitated by the department, however, done by stakeholders in the field. To start, I'd just like to begin to ensure that we have common understanding of a couple terms, some key terms. Out of school time, although I've been before you before, I just like to start with out of school time as a cohesive term is used to fully describe before, after school, before school, times and days when there is no school due to teacher training, snow days, school breaks, and summer. The to differentiate out of school time more specifically, we use in the standards the concept of comprehensive out of school time programs. And that ideally includes both extended learning opportunities beyond the school day to support the school day and school age care. So more traditional childcare, but for school age children to support working families. So that that it's wrapped around the concept of more extended learning opportunities that's educationally focused. So in some comprehensive out of school time programs include both academic enrichment and child and youth development. And as Scott, Dr. Cornish neck, sorry, already indicated, this work was done in support of Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. Now, that is something that you've updated back in August of 2020. But also, I just want to make one point that is, I think, vitally important for all of us to remember when I was before you, back in February of 2020, when Mr. Chair and you requested a presentation on out of school time and literacy, that only that our children are in school for only 12.5% of the hours of their lives during a any given calendar year. That means 87.5% of their waking hours are outside of the school day in any given year. That is why we are here about talking about out of school time standards. And that is why ultimately we have a primary purpose of talking about quality out of school time standards. It's to help schools and other organizations, private, public, childcare providers, et cetera, in developing high quality, comprehensive out of school time programs for all children and youth in grades K through 12 and bridging from pre-K into K to 12. And that's vitally important right now. Why we are doing this? You updated the Top 10 Strategic Education Plan last August. The goals of Goal Two, Goal Three in particular speak to this, talking about early literacy and literacy in particular, talking about health, safety, and wellness of all learners. That's vitally important. And these standards, talking about the quality of programming in out of school time and how they extend academic enrichment of the school day into out of school time, all are in support of those goals. The Michigan Department of Education has a variety of enhanced opportunities for social emotional learning grants and initiatives that my fellow director, Diane Golzinski, is able to lead on behalf of the department. And I think we have all acknowledged that, in particular during COVID, the the attention on social emotional learning in particular has risen to the surface as one of those key foundational pieces to being able to learn and thrive. And another project that I'm have the fortune, good fortune of leading on behalf of the department is a project on early early childhood education and out of school time career pathways to help with the teacher shortage and workforce shortage. And this is related to Child Development Associate and Michigan Youth Development Associate credential paths in high school and secondary and getting early interest into career paths that may lead to teacher credentials later down the path. So ultimately, these three bullets, plus the fact that both the on the tail end of the Trump administration federally, the Biden administration, and at the state level, our current legislature and the administration are have a showing interest and put are putting funding into before, after, and summer learning like we've never seen before. So given this, we have a great opportunity to not only look at, but enhance based on the most recent research, evidence-based practices, what is in place now and taking it to what is the most current to guide our program providers, our LEAs, PSAs, et cetera. So given this, who can use this? The most the most standards are voluntary. That is something that is acknowledged, except for those programs that may be specifically mandated to use state standards around programming by their funding source or by law, rule, or regulation. And these are a whole variety of different entities that may be guided. They may be using the standards in whole or in part. But again, these are voluntary. And for instance, 21st Century Community Learning Centers, which are the grants that we provide out, you know, they are guided by the standards that you pass because we provide them out through the department. But many of our partners, as you see in these other bullets, they are adopted and guiding their programs by the standards you set through the most. I'm going to turn this over now to Lorraine, who will guide you through the process we used and how they worked on the standards that we brought for you today. So Lorraine, go ahead and take it over, and I will do the slide deck.
Hi, everybody. I'm Lorraine Thorson, and I've worked with out of school time for most of my career and at the department for almost 17 years now with the 21st Century Community Learning Centers. And I just wanted to mention that 21st Century Community Learning Centers are mandated by their grant application to follow out of school time standards, whereas the others on the slide that Richard showed you earlier are have adopted them voluntarily and which is really saying a lot about the state of Michigan and the fact that we do have state standards for out of school time. We were the first state in the country to adopt them by our State Board of Education. So I'd just like to brag on you guys about that because I think that you have really moved the field forward in our school time. But who participated in this update? Well, beginning in the fall of 2019, the Michigan After School Partnership, MASP, and MDE convened a stakeholder committee consisting of about 20 individuals from state, regional, and local agencies to review the most standards of quality. And as you can see on the screen, we had representatives from private programs, their administrators and their educators. We had them from public programs. We had them from school districts. We had representatives from professional associations around out of school time and early childhood associations. We had child and youth advocate agencies across the state. We had university researchers from University of Michigan and Eastern Michigan University and Michigan State University. And we had the partners we work with at the Licensing and Regulatory Affairs and Health and Human Services, all represented on this committee over time. And we've met monthly or bimonthly for several months to look at these standards. Next slide. We come, we reviewed all the standards, and then we decided that we needed to update some of the titles that we had used. And we have seven critical components. We kept it at seven critical components. But we changed the titles of those components to more accurately match what is reflected in current research and other state standards. These critical components are followed by several standards within those. And then each standard is followed by indicators. If you have your document nearby and you've flipped through it, you can see that there are the critical components, then standards, then indicators that help define what out of school time programming, high quality out of school time programming should look like. Next slide. It's not changing. Oh, there we go. So you can see health and safety, and there are the standards. I'm not going to go through and read all these slides to you. There's one for every one of the critical components. So if we could just flip through those slides and pause slightly. Positive climate and emotional safety, that became very important that we change it to emotional safety. Program staffing, we added a lot of information about program staffing and making sure that program staff were knew what they were supposed to be doing in out of school time. Program environment and making sure that we make the place safe and and supportive for the students and looking at it through lots of lenses. And then the program and the activity standards for what do kids do in the out of school time program? And there's a lot of standards on that. And then we also separated administration standards for the program administrators so that they would very clearly know what their role is in operating a high quality after school program or out of school time program. And then we had single purpose programs. And you may know of a single purpose program. Your child goes to a dance class or a karate class or chess club. Those are the programs that don't necessarily have to follow any licensing regulations. They don't have to follow any specific regulations. So we ask that programs like that take a look at the standards, find out what's appropriate for that kind of program, and to follow those programs to make sure that no matter where our children are in their out of school time, that they're following high quality standards and that they're they're we're meeting their needs. Next slide. So the process for drafting the standards was that we reviewed as a committee 21 state and organization standards. We were the leader, but a lot of states have followed, and they've developed their own standards or they've but I have to say, we're one of the few states that still are adopted by our State Board of Education. Most others are by an organization outside of their State Board of Education, which doesn't make their standards as strong as ours are. And I don't know how to say that other than I'm really proud to to share across the country that we have State Board of Education standards around out of school time. And we are often asked about our programs across the country. The work of the committee was to review all of those standards, and we took a lot of information and how it was laid out, how those standards looked. And then we we looked at current research and reviewed that. And then the committee worked, like I said, from the beginning of the fall of 2019 through the spring of 2020, when we paused things because of the pandemic, and it was very difficult to do this work remotely. And we had already pretty much decided what things were going to happen. But we just didn't finish the work because we knew that this wasn't something that was really the most important thing we could be working on when we really needed to work on how we provided programming for kids. And then the work on the standards was resumed in the spring of 2021, and the committee finished drafting its recommendation in April of 2021. These recommendations not only recognize the content, reorganize the content and the clarity, but also include additions in the areas of health and safety, cultural competency, and they stay current with the field and with research. So there's a lot of updates, and there was a lot of information about equity that was added, built in to every section of the standards. And we wanted to make sure that that was reflected. Next slide. What we're asking now is to go take these with your blessing to public comment so that we can receive comment from the field and from schools and school districts to see if we met what the field wants and needs, and if they feel that they can support the standards as they are now. We did this in the past when we first wrote the standards and every iteration after that. We would like to do that via Survey Monkey, and then we will pull together all the public comment, review it with the committee, and have a presentation for our final recommendation to you in August. And the contact information. Any questions?
Very good. Thank you very much, presenters. Well done. Board members, comments or questions for our presenters? While you're thinking about comments and and questions, I would just like to underscore, Ms. Lipton, I've got you as the number one. I would just like to underscore one thing that Mr. Lauer said at the beginning of his presentation, namely that children are in school one eighth of their hours during a year, and that they are out of school seven eighths of their year. And we have a responsibility, particularly when they're working in when they're they're in programs for young people in the community, we have the responsibility to pour into those programs and make them as strong as possible, as rich as possible for our young people. So we appreciate that reference. We appreciate the presentation. Ms. Lipton, to you a question?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I know that sometimes we get a lot of gloomy news in terms of what we're not doing, and it's always very positive to hear when we are doing something really great and also when we are a leader. And so that is very, I very much appreciate appreciate the the presentation. I was just curious, is there is there a sort of a best standard or in your opinion in terms of a a set time when these types of standards should be reviewed? Is it just sort of as needed, or I'm just thinking in terms of technology and sort of as as people are innovating these types of rich and robust programs, is there a set schedule every three years, every five years, or is it is it just something that is just sort of, you know, one day you say, okay, well, we need to review the standards?
This is an we have typically tried to go no longer than every five year cycle has been the case. That tends to be within our fellow colleagues in licensing, looking at childcare licensing rules. looking at childcare licensing rules, looking at our standards. It has gotten a little away from us over the last couple of years. Part of that is also keeping a pulse on having our expert leadership of management and content experts keep a pulse on what's going on in the field with research. There's no reason to, you know, to, from my point of view as director, to waste the time of our stakeholders, of our providers, of our advocates, to pull them together to do this process when there isn't anything significant that has, you know, moved forward in the research or in practice. And so I kind of then also make a judgment call as to whether or not to put it off an extra year or two. And I take that to my leadership to say, we're not going to do this right now. We're going to put it off a year or two until there is a significant amount of research that has moved forward, best practice and so forth. So there is a little bit of judgment call as well as kind of an arbitrary five year threshold that we definitely want to take stock at what's going on.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton, Mr. Lauer. You've muted yourself, Dr. Rice. I beg your pardon. That was addition by subtraction. Any other questions or comments? Or comments or questions? Sometimes if you mix it up a little bit, something triggers in the, in the memory banks. Okay, hearing and seeing none. We appreciate the presentation very much and we look forward to bringing you back in August and sharing with us the results of public comment. Thank you very much.
We look forward to it. Thank you.
For the next agenda item is presentation on Childcare and Development Fund State Plan for fiscal year 2022 through 2024 market rate survey. Federal Childcare and Development Fund is a $5.3 billion block grant program that provides funding to states, territories and tribes to provide access to childcare services for low income families and improve the quality of childcare. Every three years, a state plan must be completed for the utilization of these dollars. As part of the state plan submission, states are also required to submit the results of their statewide market rate survey on childcare costs and rates. This is an informational presentation and does not require board action. The presenters are Dr. Scott Kennick-Schneck, Deputy Superintendent of P-20 System and Student Transitions, and Ms. Lisa Brewer-Walraven, Director of Child Development and Care. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Ms. Lisa Brewer-Walraven, welcome, and Dr. Kennick-Schneck, welcome back.
Great. Thank you. Thank you again, Dr. Rice and state board members for allowing us to spend some time with you this morning. Lisa and I are in the unenviable position of being between you and lunch. So my commitment to you is that we will be brief. So I will start the presentation with that. But Lisa and her team have been very busy working to complete the Childcare Development Fund Triannual State Plan. The CCDF plan is how states and territories apply for CCDF funding. It is the primary mechanism for the federal administration for children and families that to use to determine state and territory compliance with requirements of the law and the rule. Again, it is a three-year plan and it runs from fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2024. And it also aligns with the state of Michigan's fiscal year. The state plan is broken into eight sections. And Lisa is going to highlight each of those sections as well as discuss the market rate survey. As Dr. Rice indicated, this is a presentation for information and awareness only and no action is needed as Dr. Rice provides the final sign off for the plan. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Brewer-Walraven.
Thank you. Thanks for having us this morning to share this information with you. I will jump right in. As Scott mentioned, we don't want to stand too long between you and your lunch break. The purpose of the block grant coming to states is really to support low income working families who have an income at or below 150% of the federal poverty level by improving and increasing access to affordable, high quality, early care and after school programs for children ages birth through their 12th birthday. Children are served in a variety of settings that are either licensed or approved license exempt settings that may be in their own home or in the home of a relative. And you can see that while childcare was never officially closed during the pandemic, the number of children has slightly decreased from last fiscal year to this fiscal year, while probably family members or parents who were working from home chose to keep their child with them. But we are seeing more children returning to care as more and more individuals are returning to work locations outside of their home. These funds, in addition to supporting access to high quality opportunities for children, are also targeted to help improve the health and safety of those settings as well as the quality of those settings through a variety of strategies that support the childcare providers and early educators who are supporting those children and families. The department serves as the lead agency for the block grant with the responsibility of setting policy for the implementation of the rules and regulations for the program. Each year, the legislature appropriates the block grant funding to the department for implementation of the program. It's a large body of work and we have several grants where we utilize partners to help us implement various provisions of the work. This slide starts to show you some of those partners. For example, the Department of Health and Human Services still continues to conduct the eligibility determinations for the childcare subsidy on behalf of the department. We also work with Licensing and Regulatory Affairs for the implementation of childcare licensing in Michigan. We also have an agreement with the Early Childhood Investment Corporation. They help us by doing day-to-day implementation of Great Start to Quality, which is our tiered quality rating improvement system. And they are doing our license exempt health and safety visits for those opportunities where children are cared for in their own home by someone who is unrelated to them. We also have an agreement with the Michigan Association for the Education of Young Children to implement the Teach Early Childhood Scholarship Program. This is a statewide scholarship program that's designed to help childcare center teaching staff, preschool teachers, family childcare providers, group homeowners, center directors, early childhood professionals and administrators meet their professional development goals while being employed in programs. So these scholarships help to not only increase compensation for them, it helps keep them in the field while they're working to earn a certificate or a degree. We also have My Registry, which was started in April of 2018. This is a statewide database that houses a training calendar. It houses trainer and training approval and offers full membership services for transcript review and career pathway placement that helps us be able to track employment, training and educational accomplishments for those that are in the field. Earlier, there was mentioned that the plan has eight sections. These are the titles of those sections. Again, they cover the full breadth of the rules and regulations, all the way from how are we coordinating and collaborating with others? How are we working to engage families and provide information to families? What is our plan for providing assistance to families? How are we ensuring equal access? And we'll talk a little bit more about that with the market rate survey. The health and safety provisions that we have for all of our programs and providers? How are we making sure we have a qualified workforce to support children and families? What are we doing to continuously improve quality? And what kind of integrity measures do we have in place for ensuring appropriate uses of the funds? So we provide answers to the questions in all of these sections. And that is how the Office of Childcare helps monitor our implementation and then ultimately provide technical assistance to us. As part of the state plan process, we are federally required to analyze the cost of providing childcare to ensure that we're providing equal access to children who are receiving the subsidy assistance and that we are ensuring parental choice so that they have a full range of choices across childcare opportunities. We do that through conducting what is called a market rate survey. That market rate survey is sent to all licensed providers in the state and it helps us identify gaps between the cost of care and the childcare subsidy levels that are established so that we can work to make adjustments and ensure, again, that we're reducing those gaps for access. We had a process for engaging stakeholders to gather feedback on our current implementation of the rules and regulations so that we could consider comments and suggestions for future revisions and policies to the program that is being implemented in Michigan. We really wanted to work to make sure that there were multiple opportunities for stakeholders to engage. So we tried to do this through a variety of options. We are required to consult in the development of the state plan with what is called the State Advisory Council on Early Care and Education. In Michigan, that team is the Great Start Operations Team. This slide describes that team. But essentially, the team consists of our federally required agencies and partners, which creates a cross-agency team from various departments so that we are coordinating and collaborating on Michigan's mixed delivery system. The group meets monthly to identify opportunities for that coordination and collaboration as we continue to ensure access to all programs and services. Another piece was our tribal consultation. So while the tribal partners had an opportunity to participate in any of the opportunities that were offered, we also conducted three only opportunities for our tribal partners. And they selected the sections that they wanted to focus on and talk about. And we provided that opportunity to them. Rather stakeholder feedback really happened in a variety of ways. We introduced five topical surveys. Those were available for approximately one month and they were focused on the five topics that you see here. We distributed those through our partners and had them at our website. We had 1,828 responses to the surveys. We also held four regional listening sessions that were focused on those same five topic areas. Those were hosted by our early childhood support networks and 25 individuals participated in those listening sessions. We conducted four live webinars. They were each about an hour and a half long to go through the plan and give individuals an opportunity to comment and ask questions during those webinars. We had 19 comments that were received from 32 individuals who participated in the webinars. Individuals were also able to submit written comments via mail, via fax or via email. And we received 17 comments through that avenue or that mechanism. You all received the written summary of the comments that came either through the surveys or the listening sessions or the hearings. But I just wanted to pull out a few as highlights for this morning and share those common themes. While we did get comments across a diverse array of subjects, they were mostly comments for suggestions around future changes to the program. We had a lot of comments around provider payments, what our rates are and how our payment practices currently work. We had requests for expanding and improving professional development opportunities. We had requests to increase communication between the Department of Health and Human Services and providers who are caring for subsidy children, suggestions around reviewing our policy to be more inclusive of refugee children and families, and suggestions for streamlining the fingerprint process that is used for childcare providers. A little bit more on the market rate survey. The full market rate survey report is posted at our website. We would always encourage you to visit that if you are interested. We, as states implementing the funding, are required to use childcare provider rate information that's collected during the market rate survey to establish childcare provider reimbursement rates. In Michigan, those rates are currently set by the legislature. So we share this information with them for decision-making related to rate changes. We had 3,000, a little bit over 3,000 providers who responded to the survey. And at the time, they were open and actively serving children and families. That gave us a response rate of about 44%. And we did have providers from every county participate as well as family home providers, group home providers and center providers who participated. In this instance, the home providers were actually, had a higher participation rate than those from centers. We also had three tribal programs who completed the survey. And we worked really hard to continue to increase that response rate by offering providers the opportunity to respond either to a paper survey, an online survey or a phone survey. In addition to the survey that was conducted, there were 24 in-depth interviews that were done with providers to gather more information about the cost of providing care. And the details of those interviews are included in the survey report itself. Essentially, from our contractor who conducted the market rate survey for us, it really reinforced what we already have been hearing from the childcare providers and early educators in the field related to the subsidy rates. Our rates are not currently set at the 75th percentile. What that means is that it is not giving families access to 75% of the choices for care that are available to them. That 75th percentile is really the benchmark or the best practice that is set by the Office of Childcare. So our rates fall below that best practice or benchmark. Definitely an area or opportunity for us to improve. We don't have an adequate supply of providers available to families or parents for non-traditional hours. Our registration fees for providers have increased. So our current reimbursement for registration fees is lower than what the market is telling us that is costing. We have some work to do in terms of increasing choices for parents and families in rural areas. And of course, some supply building opportunities as we continue to emerge from the pandemic and identify where care is needed if providers have determined. the pandemic and identify where care is needed if providers have determined that they are As was mentioned earlier, we are in the final stages of working on the plan, and it will be routed to Dr. Rice for approval before it is submitted to the Office of Childcare by June 30th. We, in our program office, will continue reviewing comments for program improvements as we move forward in implementing the program. I appreciate your time this morning and the opportunity to give you an overview of the plan and the process we use to get stakeholder feedback. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer-Walraven, Dr. Kennichneck. Questions or comments by or from board members? And comments and questions. I would like to just take a moment to thank both Dr. K and Ms. Brewer-Walraven for the tremendous work of our childcare unit on childcare during the pandemic. You have worked tirelessly to address the many, many twists and turns of childcare during the pandemic. It has been a very, very difficult time, but you've done it terrifically, and you've really served children's families, providers, and children themselves outstandingly as a result. Ms. Lipton, Mr. Strayhorn, in that order. Ms. Lipton?
Yes, thank you for a very informative and robust presentation. I truly appreciate it. I have two, I hope rather, short questions. The first question is, in all of your research and work, do you have a sense of the, what I would call the unmet need? In other words, you have a really good handle on who's being provided. Do you have a sense in your research in terms of what the need might be in terms of people that, for whatever reason, can't access programs? So do you have a sense of what that number looks like, if at all? And then, the second question I have is, since this is a block grant program, are these provider reimbursements going, how is the dollar, how are the dollars flowing? Are they flowing to the provider, to the family, or a combination of both?
So I'll jump in, just give some high level. COVID has made things incredibly interesting in the world of childcare. In terms of unmet need, one of the effects of COVID was, and still remains, people being at home. And when they're at home, they may not have the need they had before for care. So that's a little hard to gauge, and again, Lisa will expand on all of these things, but that's a little bit hard to gauge at this point. In terms of the dollars, again, COVID's been interesting. Pre-COVID, the dollars flowed to providers. With COVID, with some of the grant programs, they certainly flowed to providers, but they also flowed in the form of credits to parents. And so again, those are high-level answers. I'm going to turn it over to Lisa to provide some more specifics.
So Scott is right in terms of us still trying to wrap our arms around exact need with the impact from the pandemic. What I can tell you is that at 150% of the federal poverty limit, parents also have to have a need reason for the childcare subsidy. So for a family of three, that's an income of a little bit over $32,000 annually. So we know that there are many families who are probably a little bit higher than that federal poverty level range that could use childcare support. And there are proposals that are pending with the legislature to expand or increase that federal poverty level entrance eligibility for receiving the subsidy, so additional families can receive support. And in terms of how the dollars flow, it's the family or the parent who applies. We determine what they're eligible for, and then providers do submit bi-weekly requests for reimbursement, and then the subsidy is provided directly to the providers. If there are any childcare costs that are not covered by that subsidy, the provider and the parent work out the difference in terms of that cost and capturing those funds.
Just to underscore what Ms. Brewer-Walraven indicated, that proposals are to use some ARP funding to expand that FPL, that federal poverty limit, up to 200% on a temporary basis. And for a while, that was, that level was at 130%. It moved up to 150%. And the hope is that temporarily with ARP dollars, ARP with 1A, not 2As, but that with ARP dollars, that that level will go up to 200% of the federal poverty limit. Know that by way of reference, the 150% or below, 150% of federal poverty limit or below for childcare is quite a bit below the 250% or less of the federal poverty limit associated with the Great Start Readiness Program, our four-year-old preschool program, about which I will be sharing more this afternoon. So just by way of reference, because a lot of times people think that there is a single standard that courses across state government, particularly for programs that are in similar, not identical, but similar spaces as childcare and GSRP are. Not that they are the same, they aren't, but they are both in the early space, but they have different criteria, different eligibility criteria for participation. So I wanted the board to be aware of that, and just to expand on what Ms. Brewer-Walraven had said. Mr. Strayhorn, to you.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and I appreciate the presentation. That was very, very robust and informative. Ellen did take one of my questions. That was a very good question. I wanted to understand the flow of money and where, how that worked. But my question, this, you sparked another thing here, Dr. Rice, when you said about a different program that went up to 250%. Where are these, I know you said it's the Department of Human Services that has these programs that kind of monitors or distributes the application process for people that need the subsidies? Is this correct?
Yes.
So, yeah, I'll take a stab high level and then turn it over to Lisa. It's really a partnership with two other agencies. MDE receives the dollars. MDHHS, to your point, helps connect families via the application in providers. And LARA is our third partner, the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, and they provide the licensing and oversight. And so, high level, it's the three of us that are working together. And Lisa, you want to add more to that?
Sure. So Michigan has a public assistance application system called MyBridges. And MyBridges is the system where people apply for childcare subsidy. So they can either do that in a local Department of Health and Human Services office or using the online application. So oftentimes, they're applying for not only childcare assistance, but other assistance that may be needed by their family. So they can all be processed at one time by one caseworker at that local office to help make sure they get the benefits and services that are helpful to their children and families.
Okay, so that's MyBridges?
Yes.
MyBridges, okay, because on a ground grassroots level, I see this a lot from, in my work in real estate, that there are a lot of families who are in need, but they have no idea how to access it. And you know, this isn't, I don't know if they do a lot of marketing with this, or if this is something that you just find at the Department of Human Services for people on that level, but you know, I don't know if there's a way to streamline this and get the word out more, because there's a lot of families who just don't know where to go. Thank you.
There are a lot of families who need childcare, some of whom can be served by the childcare programs that we're discussing, some of which are, have too much income to be served by these programs. So there is that, you know, 150% of the federal poverty limit where we are now is a relatively low standard. Even if it were boosted up to 200% of FPL, it would still be below the GSRP, the Great Start Readiness Program, standard. So people need to just reflect upon that. There, in general, is a childcare need, and then more specifically, a childcare need for those that don't have a lot of wherewithal.
Right.
Mr. Strayhorn, thank you for the question. Mr. Strayhorn, other questions, or are you good?
No, I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Ms. Lipton, back to you, or was that a second attempt to get my attention?
Yes, the latter.
Okay, all right, very good. Other questions or comments? Going once, twice, thrice, with appreciation, again, for your leadership, Ms. Brewer-Walraven, and that of your team. It has been a very, very challenging 15 months, and we appreciate our childcare staff work during the pandemic. Thank you. Board members, with your forbearance, I would like to do a single additional item before lunch, and it is the honoring, the adoption of a resolution honoring Sheila Alice. Chief Deputy Superintendent Sheila Alice has announced that she will retire this summer. Ms. Alice joined the Michigan Department of Education as Chief Deputy Superintendent in May 2017. In the wake of Superintendent Brian Wiston's death, she was appointed interim state superintendent by the State Board of Education in May 2018 to serve as Michigan's first female state superintendent until August 1, 2019. At that time, Ms. Alice returned to the chief deputy superintendent position. No resolution can possibly fully capture Sheila's contributions to Michigan public education. Sheila has been a major force for the improvement of MDE, the development of implementation and implementation of Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, and by extension, the improvement of public education in Michigan. I appreciate her experience, her drive, and her regular focus on schoolchildren. I also appreciate her friendship, partnership, and mentorship. May I please have a motion to adopt the resolution honoring Chief Deputy Superintendent Sheila Alice?
So moved.
I have a motion by Dr. Pritchett. Do I have a second? Hearing, hearing no second, the motion fails for lack of a second. Second by Ms. Lipton. Is there, is there any discussion on the, on the motion? And Ms. Alice, you are going to get the last word, but I want, I want the board to speak to the motion before, before we roll forward. Board members, any, any speaking on the motion? Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. Sheila, I have just written down some words that I think about when I think about you. Calm, thoughtful, student-centered, practical. That comes from your local school experience, and I appreciate that, and flexible. You will be missed, but it has been an honor and a privilege to get to know you, and more importantly, to be able to work with you. Thank you so very much for all of your service.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Any, any other board members care to share? Ms. Lipton?
Yes.
And thank you, and thank you for the second, Ms. Lipton.
It was an enthusiastic second. I would just like to say I had the great honor and privilege of working with Sheila when I was appointed to the governor's transition for MDE. And her knowledge, her focus, and her just ability to incorporate all of these different visions into a single coherent strategy was, was really truly inspiring. And so I just, I will echo the sentiments of my fellow board member that I know that you will be sure, you will be sorely missed, and the students of this state are truly better for having been, been under your supervision. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Other board members care to share? Ms. Snyder?
I would add a couple of words to Judy. Welcoming and intelligent are two words that I think of Sheila. And then also, thank you very much for stepping up and leading during a time that we really needed you. It was, it was a good time, and we will miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Other board members? Going once and twice. Ms. Alice, to you before we vote. This could, this could be the deciding factor.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Rice. That's way too much pressure that you are putting on me. I thank you, your kind comments, your praise, and of course, this recognition really warms my heart and lifts my spirit. I have been so very fortunate to have worked alongside and to have led some really amazing educators throughout my professional career. And I have had some fabulous opportunities awarded to me because of my role in the department, and I will always be greatly appreciative of those opportunities. It has been and continues to be my pleasure to serve in the role of Chief Deputy Superintendent and to have served as the interim state superintendent, and also to have been the first woman to have served in that position. All of my successes occurred while I was in the department, truly because of the amazing staff who work at MDE. The support, the encouragement, the guidance, and the help that I received from them, as well as from you, state board members, and from our state superintendent, Dr. Rice, were all very instrumental in the transitions that I made while I was in the department. I greatly appreciate each and every one of you because of the skills and the talents that you bring to the work that you do, not only to support the department, most importantly, to support the students, the staff, and the family that we serve in our districts and our schools and our programs throughout the great state of Michigan. Thank you for this incredible recognition. I am very honored.
Thank you, Ms. Alice. Thank you very much. We appreciate, we appreciate you. And I know that President Albridge, who had to leave in the late morning, I know that she'll have some words to share during her report from the board president this afternoon. All of that said, I know that people are holding their breath. Marilyn, if we could have a roll call vote on the resolution?
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
You may have had to step away.
Okay, I can come back to her. Snyder?
Yes.
Strayhorn?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge? Pew, going back to Pew? And going back to Albridge. Okay, I will mark Pew and Albridge absent.
Okay, very good.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Ms. Alice. Well deserved, very, very well deserved. It is- It is, it is 12:03. We will reconvene from, from our lunch break at 1:05 to begin our afternoon session. 1:05, have a great lunch. Thank you.